6:04. Changes and additions to the agenda? Nothing, nothing, we're good?
Yep.
Approval of minutes from last month. Does everyone?
Yep, we approve.
We approve.
Sorry.
All.
Yes. I'll approve. What did we say?
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for.
There you go.
Seven. You can't second, you were there.
I can second if I was a day.
Yeah, you just can't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm second, I'm sorry, sorry.
I'll approve the minutes.
I'll give your eyes.
Eyes.
We can do it all together, right?
Yep.
You can say any opposed and any abstentions.
Any opposed.
Abstentions.
And abstentions. So we have three eyes and one abstentions. Any public participation or announcements? Is anyone, do we have anyone online that I can't?
Stacy Bradley.
Stacy Bradley?
Hi Stacy.
Any public, Stacy, you're our only, only public member. Do you have any, any announcements?
Nope.
Any other announcements? Excellent, well, we're cooking. Student presentation of learning, I'm assuming.
Which is included in the administrative report, so.
Exactly.
Well, okay.
I feel like we need to start.
Maybe what we could.
And rock on to the administrative report.
Have that be a subset of the administrative report, the students. Okay. And I will.
List it under the letters.
I'll present.
What?
On the floor. Alright. Some photo highlights to start us off. We, um, some kinders hanging there. I did the one with the Adidas sweatshirt. We had some of our band and chorus performers. It was Hartford, right, Wes? I think it's Hartford at Districts.
It was awesome.
It makes. Yeah, it was awesome. We had, the photo on the bottom right is our first graders leading the whole school assembly just before the November holiday. Yep. And we had, the bottom middle was an image of our Lunch with a Loved One in November. It was really well attended.
It was awesome.
It was really fantastic. And the photo on the very left-hand side, celebrating Tina Schiehan, who was named a UVM, I would say named educator. So Christine and I did go up to UVM with Tina and celebrated her, which was wonderful.
Awesome.
And we, I think we talked about it a little bit last month, but what, one of the things that, or the many things that Tina does, is she, there's every day she helps facilitate the morning messages for students. And so here's one example of what they look like. Should we keep it off? Will it, will it? Can you hear it if I hit link?
Possibly.
Okay. We are, they interviewed a new staffer, Mike Foley.
Good morning, Heartland. It's the morning news this week with fourth graders Christopher, Isaac, and Owen.
Today is Tuesday, November 14. Today's lunch is beef tacos. Tomorrow's lunch is mac and cheese.
And today is picture retake day. Today, we have a teacher in the spotlight, Mike Foley, interviewed by Owen.
I am Owen. I'm here to celebrate one of our music teachers, Mr. Foley. Can you tell us a bit about yourself? Mr. Foley?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So my name is Mr. Foley, I'm your music teacher. I grew up in Canada, and when I moved to America, I moved to New Mexico before I lived in Nebraska. And I lived in Nebraska for 13 years.
Mr. Foley, can you tell us what you like, what kind of music you like?
Yeah, absolutely. I really like listening to jazz music, and I really like pop music. I think they're both really, really fun. I also like classical music, pretty much everything, really, but definitely jazz.
One last question. What is something you are grateful for?
I am grateful for my family. I love my mom and my dad and my sister, and I have three great dogs, and I'm married to an awesome husband. So I'm really thankful for my family, and I'm really thankful to get to teach at Heartland with so many wonderful students and other grownups. I feel lucky to be here.
Where was Christopher? Oh, maybe.
I love the long pause.
So just the sampling that students get to see every day, which.
Every day?
Yeah.
How does she do it every day? That's amazing.
Yeah, the kids do it with, with her help, but it's.
Yeah. In the morning, though, or they do it the day before?
Yeah, we make like, uh, when I was doing it, we made like a sheet, and then for the week, we had like checkpoints, and we usually do it for the week before, so whereas a week ahead.
But still, not a workout? And just like every class get to do this? So like kindergartners, first graders?
They can, yeah. I was, happened to be in kindergarten class, must have been the end of last week, where the, in the morning video, they were talking about, anyone wants to do it? Come on! And the kindergartners were like, yes, can we do it? And the teacher's like, it would probably be the cutest morning message there is.
We're awesome.
So that's a sampling of, of what people see every day. Um, a simple woods update is, they wrapped up their work and they'll continue again once the weather cooperates for them, and they'll, they'll get back to working.
What have they accomplished?
They worked on, um, there is a path, a pretty good-looking path, it's not finished yet, but they're working on, I don't know, all the language that they have, like they're, the path is there, but they're also making the ground near it.
Safe.
Safe, whatever that, they have some nice.
Stabilize.
I know, to stabilize the thing, they're, they're doing all.
But they're making it like the right.
Grade.
And grade, and so they're bringing in a whole bunch of material.
Yes. There was a great article about it in, um, BICU Standard. Yes, RJ, right, I think, wrote it? He came here to the school and chatted with me a little bit, yes. Yep. Nice. I checked in with Jamie, um, and the invitation to neighboring public school communities who do not offer a drama program hasn't put out. We don't have any feedback at this point, the applications aren't due yet, so we don't have a sense on numbers, but once we have that, I can circle back with the group, you know what it is. And pickup and drop off, we talked a little bit about that last month, so I did ask Officer Paul to kind of do some observations in terms of his perspective from a, from a law enforcement standpoint around, is there anything we could do differently?
The evenings that it takes.
And he, he really said to me, there really was not another way to safely do pickup without essentially redesigning the road that's there, which would cost taxpayers a lot of money. And so he, his suggestion was, that is, with the design that we have, the most efficient way to do it.
Can have people listen to the don't show up an hour ahead situation?
Mostly, yes. Please, yes. I would say mostly, so that, have there been some days where there's a little bit of backup here and there for a variety of reasons that happens sometimes?
In the afternoon. What was the question about it?
There's some, so our pickup, or our pickup at the end of the day is typically somewhere between eight to 10 minutes total. Where we started 2:25, ended about 2:30, 2:30, 3:00, depending on the day. And there was some concern around it going on Martinsville Road, which is a little bit of the case, especially at the beginning, and as we start to move cars, they do move pretty quickly through there. So there is a little bit of a back, a backup, but Officer Paul didn't have any tweaks or adjustments from his perspective that we should make.
It sounds like the, like if it's not working, the next step would be separate bus driver pickup times, release times, right?
Yeah, yep. Or bus and pickup.
Yeah. That's what I mean, yeah, 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 sorry. Like bus and cars.
For each bus, that would be, right, right.
No, 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 sorry, separate bus from car pickup.
And I don't know if we're there at that point, but it's not that it's completely off the table forever happening.
Who made the complaint?
There, there were some.
Concerning.
Yeah, there were some residents that reached out to the Intern Town Manager and spoke with him.
So people that live nearby?
Yeah. Yep. And so Martin and I spoke, and we're just, from our perspective, as well as Officer Paul's, there really is not, at this moment, another way, way to help solve that. And Wes, I'm handing it over to you. And what you'll probably know is the rest of the budget is after Christine's, so I figured that was more the bulk of the conversation to do after that.
Okay, so I'm kind of, I did basically the same thing last time, but a little bit different. So I know it's kind of like, you know, on the surface, but I think the food, the theme of the month is food. Thanksgiving, obviously Lunch with a Loved One went like really well. The buffet, it was like awesome, like all the food looked amazing. And I think lunch is a great time, like now that we're all kind of settled in, and all the classes are going kind of smoothly, lunch is a great time because we get to like be social, talk with our friends, and you know, way, and I'm kind of basing this stuff with middle school, but I assume, based on my experience in elementary school, it's the same, like lunch is like, you know, always amazing because you get to eat food and hang out with your friends. And it's really a great time to like, if you're not having a great morning, or yesterday wasn't good, it's always a good time to reset, and Thanksgiving, so I just kind of thought that was a good, good theme. General news, Lunch with a Loved One, once again, went really well, it was like, there were like, I don't know how many, exactly how many people.
It was a lot.
But there were, yeah, there was a lot.
Great turnout.
Like I was turning my train like a little bit late, and there was like a line of adults just like out the hallway. It was awesome. Uh, turkey trot was a lot of fun with, um, I saw lots of enthusiastic participation because I, like a lot of people did it, especially in middle school, that I did not think were going to do it. So that was really great to get to watch them do that. And it's more of a middle school thing. We went to go see Hartford's production of Curtains, which is a musical, and it was really fun, to get to go see Hartford one, and we got to see a lot of Heartland graduates who were in it, like Jackson, and Hugh, and Daniel, and Sebastian, everyone. And it was just really cool, and a lot of fun. And so last year, or last month, I did a eighth grade report, so now I'm doing a seventh grade report. So the, like, a couple of ongoing projects, we're doing like, actually, the last day was today, it was like a paper, like tower projects, you had to get a can of beans to balance on a paper tower as high as you could get it. And there was like a formula to like, how many points do we get? So we've been doing that, and everyone's been having so much fun, because you just get to like build, and then talking about like strengths, and how different shapes will like provide, like triangles are really good for, you know, this, and fences and all that. And we also did that last year, and it was, it was just so much fun, because it's the, you know, hands-on, active way of learning. So I sent out another survey and asked three questions, and so again, I just thought, you know, what went the best? And lots of people said Thanksgiving, like Lunch with a Loved One, Thanksgiving break, all the stuff that comes with it, and just lots of different things about lots of different classes. I didn't specifically count, but there's just like tons of different, like, this project was really fun, or this, you know, day was really fun. So just thought I'd put all of that in. What happened in November that you wish could happen again? Set in December, just as kind of like a thing, like a line, but just kind of in general. So people love the field trips, which I could really see, because everyone was on like, it just seemed like everyone kind of enjoying themselves. And then GIM Kit, which is like a game, like, like a video game, but we use it, like you answer questions, and it can be like anything, so like Ms. Fusco will do like geography questions, Mr. Martin will do science questions, we do like math questions, so it's like a fun way to learn. So people, a lot of people like that. And one word to describe November, there were like four top ones. So I put Thanksgiving, fun, happy, and interesting, which I think would sum up, sum it up pretty well. There are a lot of people said fun and happy in Thanksgiving, and then interesting was, there was like a couple people, but I figured might as well put it in there.
Thank you, Wes.
Thanks.
And there's a number of upcoming events. This Thursday's Coffee with the Principal, Friday this week is a variety show, there is concert on, that's on 11/14, that's 12/14, that's my typo, for grades four through eight. There we go!
Rumbow, here it goes.
Yay! We have the Holiday Market, which hopefully, fingers crossed, this year will not get canceled due to yucky, icky weather like it did last year, is the 16th. Winter break, and then we've got winter activities starting not the Wednesday, so we come back on the Tuesday, it's not that Wednesday, the day after, but the following starting on the 10th is the beginning of winter activities.
As long as there's still snow.
I know. I know.
Do you have the numbers for the winter activities, like what people have signed up for?
Linda's still compiling, there's still some, but if you want, for next month, we'll definitely have them nailed down, do you want me to bring them?
Yeah, I'm always ready to.
And were we able to resolve the issue with ski runners?
Yeah, John Leonard was able to help us.
Right.
Yeah.
Sign up for the deal.
Sorry, is there, is there a K through four concert that I already missed?
Not right now. I did ask that.
No, it hasn't happened yet.
It'll be K through three.
Yeah, K through three, okay.
Yeah, this one is just four through eight, but at some point there will be one.
Okay, okay, okay.
It may not necessarily be December. It's time, but it will happen, as long as it, you didn't miss it. It is that time of the year.
If you missed, if you missed, uh, parent geography. I sure can.
I'm too busy, right? My report is linked, and I pulled out a few highlights, so some of you have seen some of this already, but really good information to share with the whole board. The question of the month, sorry, I forgot, hold on. The question of the month for November was similar to October, but I messed up the wording in October, so got it straight in November, and the question was, which, asked which method of accessing your child's progress you prefer? That was last month. This month, we're asking what method you currently use the most, and as you can see, most parents prefer and use written communication from staff, so.
That's so.
Email. Isn't that interesting?
Well, it's so hard for.
Teachers.
Teachers.
Yeah.
Like what a, I'm going to say burden, what a burden to put on teachers for that, like, I mean, but I didn't, I don't, I didn't participate in this question for some reason, I missed it.
That's okay. Some people, you know, a quarter of the people are using the web, the Power School web application, some are using the mobile app, really, people are not relying on their report card for.
But there's also, it's like, it's a different community, it's like different information.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because I think, I can look at Power School and say, what's missing, what are my kids' homework's missing, what are they, like generally what their grade is or whatever, but then to actually know what.
The narrative.
They're struggling, yeah, like you, you need that communication with the teacher, otherwise it's just numbers.
Right, right. And I will say too, I actually think I didn't answer this because I feel like with just a first grader, I think it's a little bit irrelevant, so what that's worth.
Yeah.
And there were, there were comments. If you go to the next slide. This was how often are you accessing Power School to find information about your child's academic progress? So there were, there's a sliver.
That's pretty good, though.
That are accessing it daily, yeah, yep. Once or twice a week is the red, which is about 35%, once or twice a month. Though, only at parent-teacher conference time was the green, and the purple was never, so we still have some people that are not accessing Power School, and some of the comments were from people, they, they did not know what Power School was. There were multiple comments about parents relying on class dojo for that, back and forth with, with the teacher, and there were comments that teachers are inconsistent in how Power School is used, which is appropriate based on grade level, but I think across grade levels.
So do the younger, the younger teachers use class?
Dojo, dojo.
Oh, yeah, we, we are, we are fully into the dojo.
Yeah.
In grades one and four.
Instant information.
Pictures.
Yeah, pictures, yeah.
But like for Power School, like, I think I asked this last time, and I've forgotten the answer, but, um, like, when, when should I, like, when should parents actually start be like engaging with Power School?
At what grade level?
Yeah, what grade level.
I would say.
Because I feel like that's something that like, I. But that's where your child's report card is going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like, so like, now, when do I engage, like, but is my fourth grader getting a report card? Is my first grader getting a report card?
We don't issue report cards, because we're.
Yeah.
A standard-based system, so you can go at any time and see how your child is doing. And, but they're never printed, teachers are reporting at the end of the trimester essentially on where kids are at. But, I mean, in theory, in a standard-based system, a student could be working on one standard all year long.
Yes.
So you're just getting checks along the way of how they're doing. And you're not going to get feedback on every standard, every trimester, right? So.
But so I should be looking.
I mean, you could log in, you could ask, you could ask your children how they're doing. I don't think you should feel pressured to go on every day.
I just leave, leave, lazy parent, just leave.
I mean, if your child starts to struggle, you're going to hear from the school, you hear from the teachers. Yeah. Oh, Tracy, Stacy said.
I think she wrote something previous as well.
Uh, let me go to the chat here. I would read these results as 51 prefer to use Power School, whether that is web or mobile version.
I don't know that.
Which actually means most respondents do not prefer written communication from the teacher. So it's good information for us, and, you know, we know that we used to do like parent information nights on how to, I'm sure, how to get onto Power School and log in, haven't done those in a bit, so.
Maybe we should do that. I think, I think I struggle more with like, what does, what does it, what does it to me? And then when you say, well, it's standard space, I look and I say, okay, well, I don't know, like, her, they may say, oh, this assignment didn't get passed in, or you got a one on this assignment. Well, is the assignment one, or are you saying the standard that they worked on for that assignment is a one right now? And it was, so it's more like trying to understand what that number represents, that's my confusion, at least.
Maybe it's time for a night.
Yeah.
Let's do it under the night.
Is it, would it be possible to put together like a, like guide to, I mean, if that exists? Like, just maybe with some of those like frequently asked questions, including some just logistics practical, here's how you log on, here's the number to call if you're struggling, or, you know, but then also like, how should I, what, what does this mean? Yeah. Yeah, I think that, Alia and I were just saying, we have an upcoming event that we're in the works and still planning, primarily target at younger grades, can't read a lot, thinking about tying it in to that as a, as a part of what we want to do.
Wait, no one talked about the Stars Night. What happened with the Stars Night? I didn't get to go.
There were stars, it was wonderful, there was a really nice turnout, we had some volunteers come up and help some people, like use telescopes to see something, it was wonderful.
It should have been, it should have been, I know. Are you going to do another?
No, it's going to be a type of feedback later.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry! I just get really, I'm really excited.
The next question of the month for December, just so you know, was in the newsletter Friday, it'll be in again. Since all the boards are working on community engagement as a goal, we're asking the community, what types they, what, what school their child attends, what grade level, have you attended any community family events this year, and what kind of community events would you like to see in the future?
Oh, school.
Yeah, well, because some, some, some events we get no participation, and some events we get a decent amount, so.
Yeah, I think a YouTube tutorial since like, with every single, like, end of the week thing of like, this is how you use Power School, like, will people really leave their homes in the middle of winter to do that?
No, but I think those already exist, actually. Ryan did those, yeah.
Which is.
Tutorials, yeah.
Web and all.
Yeah. But something as a part of an event that we're already doing.
Sure.
That we already breathe and buy in there. Okay, I'm going to conclude there, because I know that there's a.
I have a question about the survey questions.
Sure.
Are you getting any feedback on, on answering the questions, like, people?
People are pretty responsive.
Yeah.
I know there were some, another board really appreciates, appreciates that level of community feedback and engagement, and talked about doing their own, their own school level questions of the month, so I think it's a great start. I try to report out the results in my newsletters for parents to look at as well, just to see, and, you know, what we learn from the questions, try to make improvements to what we're doing. So it seems that people appreciate the very, it's quick, it doesn't take a lot of time to磨it out, and it's a way to provide some insights on particular topics.
I mean, if people are answering that.
Yeah.
I'm really loving both of, the amount of newsletters and stuff, like I love the supervisory one that you get, and I love, like, it's just nice to read, I make sure I read them all, and like, I think there's so much information in there that is great, because I don't think people, those children bring stuff home to tell them what kind of stuff is, so it's nice that it's like there every week, so thank you, thank you for keeping.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep them, people are busy, and it's hard to read a lot, so we're trying to keep them visual, snippets, people seem to appreciate that, so, thank you. All right, Lindsay, you are on, and is here, he's frantically still working.
There we go.
Do you two, do you each want one of these?
Sure.
That's version, yeah, and then take. So this is complicated. These are, there should be one of each for both of you. Okay. Version one and version two, which I did email to you on the end of last week to take a look at. Uh, yeah, I'm already, uh. Yeah.
I don't think any of them.
I guess you might get it better than. Okay.
That's really it?
Yeah. Shut up. Thank you. Before we get into it, there've been some changes, I don't know if you're keeping up with the news.
It's not for that.
On school budgets and future of funding in Vermont, but just the, the most simple way I can put it, and as you're explaining them, very complicated details if need be. If your budget from FY '24 to FY '25 stays under a 10% increase, and that is per pupil cost increase, which is pretty much the budget overall, essentially it's the budget, but because their weighting formula has changed, that does impact. So if you keep the budget under a 10% increase, your tax rate will be capped at 5%. So if your tax rate might come in under that, it might come in over that, but you're capped at 5%. If your budget goes over the 10% increase, and this is after it's all passed in your community, you will have to defend that budget in front of a committee, which will be made up of three superintendents and three business managers. We don't know if they're the same committee for everybody or different groups. They, you will have to defend why your increase is what it is, they will make a recommendation to the secretary who gets to say it's accepted, and this is after council has voted on it, yes. So if it's, if they, if you justify the increases, and the answer is, okay, yes, you're still capped at 5%. If the answer is no, you lose the cap for the next five years, because the cap is in place for five years.
So the cap is placed by the Secretary of State, is that?
It's by the legislator.
Legislators, yes. And so it, this only goes to this committee if the budget increases by greater than 10%?
Yeah.
So it's incentivizing keeping the budget?
It is. It is. In a time where we know kids have, kids have needs, and so we want to support our, ultimately we want to support our students, but we also want to be fiscally responsible, so look at things in different ways when we can. ultimately, we wanna support our students, but we also wanna be fiscally responsible, so look at things in, in different ways when we can. So with that.
Who's rule is this?
Whose rule is it?
Yeah.
The state.
There.
In practice, it's gonna be difficult.
There.
When did it pass?
Yeah.
I think in the last session, right? The, the long-term weighted formula has been renewed over the last couple of years, its implementation is this year.
So what's happened is there is local, there are schools that threaten to make, threaten to file a suit, much like what got Act sixty passed back in the early, late nineties. But what their, their point was, was that schools that had higher needs weren't getting the funding they needed. I think Woduski was the example, they had a very, very diverse population.
A high ELL population.
And they said that their cost per pupil wasn't, it was much higher. So what the state did to rectify that is they decided to take a look at how they came up with equalized people, which is part of the funding formula for a very long time, but it was based on certain weights. Weights were for ELL students or for your father-in-law.
Instead of one, like, full, one point for a student, full-time student, like an ELL student would be worth three. That was a part of Act sixty. It had centralized funding.
See, Act sixty is, as, as we've gone along in the years, they've seen problems and they've modified.
Okay, but so at this point, what it is, is still centralized funding with then distribution based on weighted.
Right, based on your student count in the building. So you look at your count here, and you look at your equalized pupil, there's really no correlation.
Right, got it, okay. Okay, and so, so schools have been threatening then, in a similar way of saying we're not being.
I don't know if it's threatening, but they've been approaching the state and saying over and over and over again.
Sufficiently funded.
We're not sufficiently funded because of.
The previous.
And so they're saying, we're gonna increase our budget twenty percent, and then the state has responded by saying, well, if you do that, we will increase the tax rate in your town, income tax rate in your town, to account for this increase that you're going to.
Right.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, they're trying to put some constraints, controls on.
Got it, by, by creating some taxpayer buy-in or ownership or.
I mean, if, if you stay under the ten percent and you're capped at five percent, you may be getting a lot more money from the state instead of raising.
Right.
Do you understand what that means? You could spend up to ten percent.
Right, 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 like.
But your tax rate.
Yeah.
Is, even if you spend ten percent more, your tax rate will not exceed five percent.
Right, 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 right.
Like, that's not.
So accounting for some degree of like inflation and cost increase without redistributing that cost directly to the town?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, I mean.
What do they call it? They call it a, I, I forget the term they use. They used a certain term, but essentially what you just said is, is really the result.
Okay. Okay.
So.
So that is maybe a goal, is to keep the budget, so going up beyond ten percent.
So that's the question, the two, the two versions that you're gonna see here, neither of which are below ten percent.
Not ever below ten percent.
Yes.
But they include everything.
They, exactly, they do include, so in the first version, it does have the two classroom teachers that are currently asset-funded within it. It has, it has a one-point-oh instructional coach position, and the playground cost is included in local funds. So, and both of these versions, the playground that we're proposing is not taken out of capital reserve. Version two is a one-point-oh classroom teacher positions that are included, that are currently asset-funded. One-point-oh instructional coach, it's currently title-funded, and the playground is also included in the local funds in that one, version one and two.
So the only difference between version one and version two is one classroom teacher?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So the, I guess, the question is, I guess, would the board like Ed and I to go back and propose a buzzed budget to you that's under ten percent?
And if we, so if we said yes to, to one of these, and just said, okay, we're just gonna bring this to the town, you know, sixteen, fifteen percent increase, there still is the possibility that that doesn't translate into an increased tax rate if this committee approves it.
Justifies.
Correct, and it will also depend.
Lose the cap.
You will, if you're over the cap and they agree, you will not lose the cap.
So there's still is a protection in place to justify this?
Yes.
But we, but this is a whole new system, and we have no way to predict how that committee will behave.
And we don't even know who the secretary is gonna be, cuz.
Got it.
We have an interim.
I see.
It's a lot of variables.
And the likelihood that people voting on this understand this dynamic is probably low, because you'd have to be pretty tuned in to state politics and education funding to know that this might happen.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, or we find a simple way to explain it, so that all key members can understand and grasp it, but I think the goal would be to stay under the ten percent. Unless you really feel strongly about, you know.
Well, and even with version, like, like, version two is still keeping us within the ratios we need to be in, keeping us at the educational quality standards that we need to be staying in.
But it does have your playground, and it, which is a good cost, so.
Right. But that's, no, not using any capital reserve.
Correct.
And we said that, you know, there's a possibility that that might be something we might wanna look into, is to like, use some capital reserve for this. And some major fundraising, or the P G O.
And you can do a phase, I mean, the presenter said you could phase one year one, you'll spend this much money, phase two the following year.
Sorry, where is the playground on this, right now, on the budget?
How much is the playground?
It's about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
And where does it show up on this budget?
It's three-ten equipment.
Equipment?
So that's, that's the playground plus other, any other equipment in there?
Yeah, there's.
Equipment's in the bottom.
Oh, yeah, location-wise.
Yeah.
Locker, locker terms in there?
Yep.
It's.
Am I looking at?
Sorry, am I?
Oh, I see, I see. It's not, so it's, it's in twenty-five, it's in the fiscal year twenty-five.
Imagine?
Yep. Not twenty-four, right?
Yes.
It'll be passed, got it, okay. I see it now, sorry, I was going wrong here, okay.
And that, that's the playground and the lockers for the lower-level kids and anything else?
Yeah, I'll show.
But I mean, that's only gonna get you down, I mean, just doing a rough math, that's only get, you get actually still a thirteen percent increase, even if you got rid of all equipment costs, right? Or a twelve, right, twelve percent increase? So.
Yeah, what does, yeah, I was gonna say, so what, what's the decrease that we're looking at?
Well, no, it's not, cuz the dollar increase on versions two is one-point-five million, and the percent increase is fifteen, so if you subtract three-hundred thousand from that, it's one-point-two million, which would be like a twelve percent increase, so you're still above.
If you look at the bottom, the over-under cap, you'll, you'll have to reduce this budget by five-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand.
Right.
Four dollars to get into under ten percent.
So that's a lot more than just the playground, right?
Yeah, it's more, yeah, it's more than just the playground.
I mean, there's never that much room.
It's, it's staffing. It's just, I mean, that's what it is.
And we have crazy people.
Yeah.
To take the kids. Yeah.
Sorry, we're mumbling over here, just saying that, that seems, that's not negotiable, right, staffing appropriately, and so that's, seems like, I mean, so just in my mind, it's almost like if you're gonna have to make this, if you're gonna have to advocate for this to the town, regardless of what you do with the, with the playground, you're probably stuck still above the ten percent cap, right?
Unless you, unless we, unless this version thirty, which is like just.
But the question is, does the playground risk the, like, refusal by the committee?
Slash and burn, version three.
Version three.
Slash and burn.
So it's probably, I mean.
Your Ashers are over here.
It's probably, I mean, if you've got two asset positions, you're probably looking at no, none of those caring.
You should read the top.
And that coach. Yeah, it's basically eliminated all three.
Yeah.
Um, how much money is in the capital reserve?
Three-hundred-and-sixty, three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-nine.
Okay, and do we ever reach out to the playground people to talk about like possible fundraisers?
They've sent me some.
Okay.
There's one, V R E C, there's a, the grant that they think it might be worth applying to, I'm in the process of, but I've also reached out to the grant people through the state as well, and it's, I'm happy to apply, I don't know how successful it will be, but I think it is worth the application.
Okay.
I mean, just.
Couch and.
Yeah, couch, oh, uh, yeah, some other foundations that are happening.
And lockers? I'm wondering like, how we can, wondering how we can take, you know, that, cuz that's, that's the easiest number to like, slash and burn, I guess, but.
The non-people numbers.
Yeah, the, it's the non-people numbers, and like, how we can get that to like, between capital reserve or other things.
To know, but we're calling, we're not even halfway there if we just completely remove the.
Right.
That is true.
Playground and lockers.
Right. That is true. That's invert, but that's only in version one, in version two, it gets us much closer.
I was wondering too, though, about these categories where there's, where there's a surplus between the fiscal year twenty-three budget and actual, kind of true, acknowledging we still have a month to go in the year, but like, you know, not, this is not a big gain, but like travel, for example, there were like twelve thousand budgeted, and we've spent under two thousand so far, so I guess five thousand just seems like a reasonable then halfway point to budget for, but are there things like that where it does, not as much needs to be budgeted?
But like, look at the energy, energy went from one-oh-one up to one-thirty-five, like, that's like thirty-four thousand dollars that just got eaten out of it, so. Same with Jews and Indians. So.
So there, so before you go too far.
I'm running a rabbit hole.
And there, there is a surplus from the twenty-three actuals, right? Of about, I think it was like, two-hundred, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand three-sixty-four.
Can you apply that to this?
Yeah.
So there's two-hundred-and-thirty?
Two-thirty-four.
Okay. So we're just gonna say two-thirty for right now. So we take two-thirty, that brings that number down, the five-hundred-and-fifty-four. And then try to fit, like, because then, in a way, that, doing something with lockers and playgrounds, and then throwing all capital reserve, like, we could, we could do it.
Yeah, like you could make the playground like capital reserve plus fundraising.
But it's also, I'll just put a reminder in here, we can also put that surplus into capital reserve.
Yeah.
So if we don't, I mean, we, all we have in there right now is three-hundred something in capital reserve.
Yeah.
So we just need to be really cognizant of like, we haven't fed capital reserve for a while, and like, is this the year that we need defeated? Is this one more, like, I don't know, I just put it out there of like, then, I mean, but just, then we won't have a playground, like, and like, when we had a big project like this, then we won't have the funds there to do the playground, so like, it's that.
And we're feeding it in this year where there's this new dynamic.
Exactly, like, that's, I'm just putting it out there.
That like, as we, cuz I presume by this time next year, everybody will have a lot more experience of this whole process.
Or it changes.
Or it changes again.
But you said.
The only constant, I guess, right?
If we make the under ten percent, it's good for five years, like, we've been.
You have to make it every year.
Oh, you have to make it every year. Oh, okay.
You have to stay under ten every year.
So they're promising to keep this somewhat level for those years, even though if you.
Yeah, but, but also think about, so they're calling it the, you know, the financial cliff in year six. You're actually gonna have to pay all the tax that you've kind of not paid, if, if, not explaining it very good.
So regard, so if you're maintained under five percent tax, it's gonna still go up in year six?
It's, in year six, it's gonna go up to what you actually should be paying, yes, so if state's kicking in, right, state's compensating.
Yeah.
Jump. Unless, unless it changes, which is, that no one knows.
I don't even, yeah.
I only wanted to get some, some big draw man.
Two questions. The capital reserve, I know the history of the capital reserve, cuz I helped design it. Capital reserve was, so the school had money to do projects and not borrow money and the taxpayers paying interest. I would be uncomfortable for that to go towards the budget, towards the budget. It's there to help the school so they don't have to borrow money to do projects. The heating system goes down, the driveway blows up or something like that, that's what that capital reserve was intended for, cuz the school used to borrow money to do projects. We designed the, the reserve so the school didn't have to borrow money. All they had to do was go to the board and say, hey, we need a new classroom because of this reason, and we had the money. So that was the thought behind that. So me personally, I'd be against using anything as budget. It'd be for that. And is the playground in the budget?
Yes, so that was the thought of the potential of using the capital reserve is.
Is to you go to the board and budget.
Location-wise.
Already, yeah, okay, I hear, that's, that's, okay, thanks.
So it's, it's currently right now built into both of these versions of the budget, but I think the question on the table is, does the board wanna consider using capital reserves, or going to the taxpayers for a new project?
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And my question was more like, do we take our surplus and put it into the capital reserve?
I think that makes sense.
Or do we put the surplus and put it toward the budget for next year, so we don't.
Kinda either.
Yeah.
It kinda does the same thing if you're, I suppose.
I mean, if we're just putting it toward the budget for next year, then it's just going directly to pay it, so we can get down to that ten percent.
I think it's gonna happen.
Put it in the capital budget.
But I also don't think, I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we need, should be emptying our capital reserve now.
But we keep, there's the capital reserve for.
You know, like, I think we should look at what pieces we can.
Right, cuz the playground is really like a planned, a planned.
It's not a project, it's not an emergency.
Not an emergency, right, it's a project, but it's not a sort of crisis that you would have to borrow for, okay.
Makes them be, we'll tie yours.
Start small.
But I still don't think if you get rid, like, I still am just back to this point that like, even if you take the playground out of this, we still are going to be a town that is landing above ten percent, and is there any way other than cutting staffing to keep the budget under ten percent? Was the question.
Staffing is probably, what, about eighty percent of our budget, in general?
Yeah. So that's, so it's very hard.
Large majority of it, it's, it'd be very challenging. And, and it's still working the way, it's, I mean, we just got the information this evening.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I think that what the board needs to direct us to do is stay under the ten percent, and we come back and bring you what that looks like.
Do version three.
As well as you can, yeah, under ten percent.
I do worry it's gonna be a tough year, just with sort of like, national politics, there's just so much, there's gonna be so much fraud. Emotion about, well, that's what I mean, is at the time where it's passing, right, I mean, I just think people are, there's gonna be a lot of.
One of the things that we're.
Financial anxiety.
Trying to figure out is, you look at these two versions, and you look at the over-under, and I'm saying version one, you're over six forty-four, and the other one is five fifty-four.
Yeah.
It's the calculation as far as what constitutes the ten percent. You know, how do they come up with it?
How are you calculating that ten percent?
And the reason I say that is because they're using numbers, last year they didn't have this new weighted average, okay? So they've created an estimated one. Now, in order to do the comparison they're talking about it, you'd have to use that number. Now, I don't know whether they're gonna live by that number, cuz they just came out with this year's number.
Were you pursuing the number?
Right, so, and I, when I'm showing you the six forty-four and the five fifty-four, those numbers could change depending on how all of this shakes out as, what's happening is legislature passed this, and now everyone's trying to figure out how to implement it. And we're implementing it as we go, because, of course, when they come out with these numbers, half the business managers in the state ask questions and say, well, wait a minute, did we do this, did we do that, and two-thirds of them, the, the, the Department of Education says, oh, yeah, oh, well, we didn't really think, you know what I mean? So they have to go back and take some adjustments, so it's gonna be, we're gonna keep going, it's gonna be till the eleventh hour on this. So I, I, these numbers that I'm giving you tonight are the, right, right now, the best ones to come up with.
Yeah, they could change.
They could change it, yeah.
Where's the number adjusted then? Like, you're using a weighted average.
They give me.
And where?
They give that number.
The state is using the weighted average.
They use a thinking called the average daily membership, which is.
Right, but where is it in the budget? Like, if you do a math.
Or is it represented in the budget?
It's represented here on the sheet, like.
On here?
You don't have the per pupil cost, yeah, that's gonna give you.
This is just the expenditure budget.
Okay.
So it's not on you?
No, no.
I see what you're saying, so, because this still is school-wide increase, and what they're actually gonna look at is pupil.
Yeah, but it's.
Per pupil increase, which could be different depending on your denominator, and your denominator's gonna depend on the weighted average, we don't really know.
Right.
Okay.
Maybe it goes.
Cuz you're gonna take this number and like divide it by pupil.
Is that a rigor?
Yes. It just means we don't know, because if you end up, if they.
My little rigor keeps changing.
If they weigh our school population.
Right, but they have to compare that number you just talked about.
Right, to.
To this year's number, but they.
Something like. Right. But they've changed the weighted.
But this year's number is also different, yeah, so they.
Right, and we have no way to predict, cuz of what you just said, that this like weighted value is not in any way related to the number of kids in this building.
It's kinda in the. And then there's other things that impact, I mean, your tax rate too, that's.
So I mean.
Appraisal, right?
It's like you just.
There's all kinds of, there's the, there's the property yield, there's the income yield, all of that stuff, so the, the property yield.
It's very complicated.
Yeah.
Mark has a question.
It stays, it stays relatively in, within a range, well, the one they just gave us is five thousand dollars less than the one that we had last year.
Why do that?
Meaning it's gonna cost us five thousand dollars less for our child right now?
No, 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 I'm just saying that the, the numbers, they're skewed.
Per child?
Right, now, this is the property yield and the income yield that they developed to smooth out sixty, so now they've got these two numbers, and they've, like I said, they've been
Just changed that.
Relatively even as we've gone along, but now the Department of Taxation sent out these new numbers, and we do a comparison.
So it's free, and they're gonna do something to fix it.
Yeah.
And we don't know what that is.
Right, and we won't know.
And the, and the thing about those numbers is, that's the recommendation by the Department of Taxation, right? And the, and the thing about those numbers is, that's the recommendation by the Department of Taxation, right? They send out a recommendation, then the legislature looks at the number. And in that same letter, they were talking about an eighteen percent increase in property taxes across statewide.
Which is an average.
Based on the numbers that, the preliminary budget information they got.
Uh-huh.
It started.
So, I mean, it seems to me that, that we are up against a, a set of variables which are currently unknown, which are gonna be multiplied by factors which are currently unknown, right? And so like.
Yeah.
Oh, jeez.
So like trying to play into that game is almost a, a like, a, just, it's a futile endeavor to some degree, right? And so what we should probably do is like in our sort of like, you know, best faith effort, create a budget that seems appropriate to meet the needs of the kids of this building, right? And that is likely to be agreeable to the taxpayers.
And under ten percent.
But I don't think we can target that, because we don't even know what that, where that's gonna be on the bullseye right now, right? There's so many moving pieces that it seems like trying to meet that, that like highly movable target is really.
Yeah.
But you're, you're gonna have to make a decision by the time.
Yeah. Right.
January.
Right, and so that's the point is that it, it feels like what we should really be, I think, to me, the question is, how will taxpayers in the climate of, you know, March twenty-four feel if we say we'd like to put in a two hundred fifty thousand dollar playground? Right, I think we can easily justify the teachers and the, I worry a little bit about that piece, that, that with the sort of financial anxieties that exist right now, that people may find that to be a big, especially with these sort of insecurities about potential vulnerabilities with this new system.
And we, um.
But I don't think we should be, I mean, I think we should pick teaching positions based on what we feel is the most appropriate thing for the school. And if that turns out to be a hundred thousand dollars extra somewhere, we don't even know if that's gonna put us above our goal.
What position got removed for version one?
For version one is the two.
I mean, version two.
Is one of the S R, what is currently an S R funded classroom teacher. There's an additional classroom teacher in version one, there's two instead of one, because it's, because we don't know yet if that's gonna be.
But is it a position we need? S R position.
They're currently all classroom teacher positions. I think there are some ways that.
Here's what I think.
Yep.
We should try to get a third budget that's at ten percent.
Under ten, under nine point.
Ten percent.
Yeah, nine point nine nine.
Counting decimal places.
What's the ten percent? Did you under the cap?
Yes.
Makes us stay happy.
It protects you, it protects you from the tax increase this year, delays your tax increase for five years, so your tax increase at five percent.
I don't even know.
Okay.
So we don't become a whole.
Then we have three versions.
Doesn't, Old Town and all that's up the window.
All that's up the window now.
Yeah, that's no longer a big, that's no longer.
And then can we approve it like an if then, like? We don't know what's coming. If it's this, we do this, if it's that.
We'll know, I mean, I think.
We do that.
In the next week, or not even.
At least we're through all this.
At the very outset.
In that case.
We'll start getting some of these numbers.
Yeah.
Just looking at fun.
Have a better idea.
Yeah, that's like that.
When do we?
And I think be prepared to take the playground. Down, maybe just down, staged. Just for optics.
How bad would he be? What are the, what's the locker price?
Thirty-six thousand.
Okay. There's just like a little part of me that like feels like if, what are, where are we?
See, that's, that's where I would use your capital reserve, the lockers.
Oh.
That's what the capital reserve is designed for, something like that.
Because they need to be reserved.
Doesn't cost the school, the taxpayers, like, because they've already put the money in.
Yep.
And it reduces your budget by thirty-six thousand.
How about the playground?
Why not the playground then?
Playground, playground's a little bad.
Yeah. Um, so. It sounds like we have, Martin, did you have another question?
No.
Or you also. Um. It sounds like our movement going forward is to see what that budget looks like if it's under the ten, current ten percent. Um. And then see what we can go from there.
I think we might.
My question, my question is, what is the timetable we have here? Because I'm feeling like a little like.
More. Like, well, we gotta have the warning out.
No, yeah, the warning has to be out by the early February.
Yeah, February, yeah, early February.
March fifth is the, is the focus.
Yeah, thirty days before.
So it's right to go.
Yeah, October forty-five ahead, that's correct.
So.
February, it's gotta be.
It's dropped that day.
Uh, once your February meeting.
Do we?
February. Last year, it was the end of January, I think, for this. So you thought January and then February, your meeting is the sixth.
Too late.
That's gonna be too late. You might have to add an additional meeting in Jan, in January, at the end of January.
In January, so we look at the.
Yeah.
You know, most, another one this month would be almost more pragmatic.
The only, the only thing.
We need the information.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not worth me talking, yeah.
Right, so there's.
I want numbers, we have the numbers.
If the changes haven't come from the state, then obviously, but if they have come in, then we would.
We have to get the C L A.
Yep.
Right? And we also have to get, uh, a final number on, um, tech F T Es and a couple of other numbers that the state provides. Normally in, in the last three years, it's kinda crazy, but.
I'll ask Stacy tomorrow if she has the C L A, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Um.
I, I would know, because they send a letter to you guys. The board chairs, remember?
The board chairs, we'll get it, I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just saying, I get nothing. Okay, so I think, I just had another question that flew out of my head.
I think we'll, it sounds like we'll know more at the next meeting, and it might be nice to see one more budget that, that targets this.
Yeah, I think what we wanted for tonight was just guidance from the board, given what we know. How do you wanna proceed?
Do, do you want us to come with a version three that is under ten percent? Then maybe hopefully having by the beginning of January, Ed and I would have more.
Yeah, and hopefully you know more about what that ten percent.
How about the surplus for you?
How about the surplus, though? Like, can we, can we wiggle in?
The surplus is two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, so like, can we wiggle that in to like what that could do? Plus, if like we took the number down for playground slash lockers by like a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand dollars, like what?
Yeah, I think it's.
I feel like version three has got a sort of.
Yeah, it's got like version three.
Three and three point one.
Four, five, like, I feel like there's a couple.
There's a couple.
Couple, because it makes me think of like, yes, throw in the surplus, what does it look like?
Because like.
Okay, take the, this part of the playground out, what does it look like?
Yeah. And same like with like version two, like.
So one of the things about the surplus in, in the prior years, that you've used the surplus to, to do, so you start with eleven million dollar budget, or eleven million five hundred thousand, your budget. Now, before you put it into the funding formula, you take out local revenue. And what your local revenue has been over the last few years has been the surplus from the prior years. And this year, you use four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of that surplus to buy down your tax rate. Okay?
Yes.
So what we're talking about is expenditures now. We're not even talking about tax rate yet.
Okay.
Okay, so you get your budget, if you don't use the two twenty-three or the two thirty-two.
Yeah.
To, uh, buy down the tax rate, your tax rate's going to be higher. And then, then you're gonna be faced with not just the ten percent on the budget, you're gonna be faced with, does this tax rate look like it will pass? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, just, just so you know that, you know, yes, you could take the two thirty-two and put it into the capital reserve and use that as an offset for whatever you can ask the voters. For, so it would be, we're gonna spend two hundred and fifty, but we're putting two thirty-two in, but.
Tax rate.
The tax rate would go up.
Would go up then. So, yeah, which, what is, what's less painful for the public?
The tax rate.
The tax rate.
Is there any possibility that when we get this number, this number, mystery number, that we'll have, any of these numbers will go down? Any of these budget numbers will go down?
Possibly. Yeah, if the weighted, if the weighted average is high, right, the weighted value.
Per pupil was high.
What's the chance?
Fill out those.
Well, it's a problem.
In this formula, some towns are gonna be too well, some towns are not.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just don't.
But it could go down.
Or, or it could go up.
And, yeah, it's not gonna come from probably E L L as much.
So that was my thought.
The question is like the getting.
Behind. That was my thought behind getting a third version, was if we had a lean version, then when we come back together, knowing the number, it's either gone up or down, and then we can make a decision about.
Yep.
I think I can give you a better idea.
That'd be the fourth version, which is.
That's what we do.
No, in the next week.
So at the next meeting.
Right.
Or you could send it out to the board at the time.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I can certainly send it back out, so.
Yeah, send it whenever you find out.
I mean, if you wanna get under ten percent, you gotta cut five hundred seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, I don't see us, I don't see us doing that, but I think we need to, I think we need to see that, we need to have that in a piece of paper for our voters. I mean, this is what it would look like if we could do that, but we can't.
Well, but they're not gonna vote between choices, right? They're just gonna vote yes or no.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can, we just need to make sure we explain it just.
It's gonna have to be a message, yeah.
And a vote is.
Yeah. I think it, uh, key piece of the message honestly is gonna just be like, eventually it's gonna be, we're gonna have to pay it back in five years, right? That's, I think that like will really change people's.
Yeah, I'd rather have an even.
Perspective on that.
No, what do you mean you gotta pay it back?
When you, at the end of five years, if you've stayed under the five percent, if you've stayed under the ten percent increase per year, which has maintained your tax rate under five percent, at the end of five years, you will, it will be readjusted to account for the increases.
You'll be paying the full, the state's kicking in, if you stay under ten percent, under a ten percent increase from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five, your per pupil spending, they will cap your tax rate at a five percent increase. And they're gonna have that formula in place for the next five years. If you go over ten percent, you defend your budget at a hearing after the budget's been approved by the.
Right, right.
The town. And that committee's made up of three superintendents, three business managers. They make a recommendation to the secretary, that person says, okay, that, those justifications seem reasonable, you can still, um, have the cap of five percent. If they say no, then you lose the cap for the five years. So it is a risk, but, I mean, I think if you're defending your budget and it makes sense, what kids need, I, I can't imagine a committee.
Yeah.
Turning it down, but we don't, there are a lot of unknowns.
Yeah, but that's.
Having, what, what Christine just outlined, though, what it does is it sets your rate at five percent. Your tax rate will not increase by more than five percent, so you're gonna be asking, if you stay under ten, you're gonna be asking your taxpayers to pay five percent more, which is more in line with what they've been paying. Then, you know, your budget this year is going from, the prior year budget was, in twenty-three, the budget was nine million five thou, five hundred thousand. And twenty-four budget was nine million nine hundred ninety-one, and we're looking at nine, the twenty-five budget's eleven million five ninety-two. So you're going up. A lot in one year. And that's why they put this in.
Yep.
All right.
Other? Do you guys feel like you have the directive you need?
So Ed and I will come back with multiple.
The other, I guess the question that I was having, has staff been informed and gotten input on what may need to happen?
We form, I put out there, it's a form of budget committee, um, I have, I have one teacher express interest, um, talked another teacher into it today, which is great, it's not yet two. So I.
They understand what this looks like, like, have you guys, at one of your staff meetings, just?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too unknown, like this is just gonna like.
Put up flares right now. I just feel like there needs to be like this moment where.
You should, they should know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think we're very quickly approaching that point where we will have to have that conversation, we just haven't yet.
Yep.
Because they have, they may have some great ideas.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and they, I mean, you guys and them, you're in it every day, we just get, come here and get numbers and freak out. All right, is there any more discussion around the budget?
Just one other quick question, tuition is increasing a lot, is that, I just can't remember, we talked about numbers of kids per grade, is that because of increase in kids going to ninth grade? We looked at it, it's pretty even.
So it's more related to costs rising?
Yes, and where, where, where can the biggie go?
Okay.
Have we been? What, can you remind me of the rule about? School choice at this moment, because the state had.
Yes.
Come down with something, and then what was, like, every, like, at one point, there was this moment where like, the district had to choose like five schools that it could send.
That didn't pass.
Okay. So, so any, so any kid can go wherever, anywhere they wanna go and we.
As, as, as long as they're on the state-approved independent, independent school or public school, yeah.
And we pay, we pay the difference. Is there, are there any towns that say like, we will pay the average per pupil rate? And like, if you, like, is it against the rules to say like, you will pay the average that, and then?
It's what they do in Congress, yeah.
What?
That's what they do in the town I live in, yeah.
Okay, so.
But that's New Hampshire, it's not Vermont.
Okay, but like, does, does, are there school, are there towns in Vermont? We, or just every town coughs up whatever.
Well, there's not that many school choice towns anymore in Vermont, right?
With your school choice too. And they pay, they'll pay the cost of a public school, they'll pay the state, um, per student average if it's an independent school.
And your question is, is there any interest in doing that, let's say, for Hanover, that it would be?
Yeah, or just, you know, like whatever.
I mean, the one, the worry I have about that is just the equity of that, that it just really, I feel like that's gonna even further.
It's hard, it's really hard to decide that, but in a way, like, if there is a place that a lot of kids are choosing and it's costing, you know, double or half or significantly more, like, and it's to the point where like, we have to like cut teachers here, and like, is it? Worth it?
Would it help to have those numbers? Like, the state average was what, eighteen-nine last year, Hanover's twenty-three, twenty-four? Like, the state average was what, eighteen-nine last year, Hanover's twenty-three, twenty-four?
Twenty-four, yeah. I don't know though, Heather, because I feel like the flip side of that argument is that there are definitely families who move to Heartland.
For that reason.
Because of school choice, right?
Absolutely.
And if you suddenly make it a pay-to-play kind of dynamic, um.
Oh, I know, like, no, I, I hear you.
And so there's, you know, there's like an argument to make that, like, we are still educating the kids of Heartland.
Yeah.
Right, when they, when we're spending twenty-three thousand on Hanover, and if that feels like the right fit for kids, I do worry about it. I mean, we're going through this right now, I mean, I remember going through it as an eighth grader, I do worry about it coming down to, like, can your parents afford the five thousand dollar difference? I think that's a really dangerous.
I, I.
When it comes to public schools, yeah. Yes, right, separate from private schools, of course, but I think if there's, you know.
Um, how does it work for private schools now? Because like, public schools, I can get it, but like.
It's like the average tuition goes to the private families.
It's just like a set amount.
And the family pays for the difference.
More than that family just has to.
Yeah.
Um, and is that the same for public, private schools, like that for, and stuff like it?
No, because they're, they're public.
Okay.
All right, well.
You know, you know, you will return next month.
So Ed and I got some work to do. 'Tis the season, right? Um, we just, I guess we covered items for discussion then, because it was, and we have no motions. So onward, setting the next agenda?
Yeah.
Budget?
Budget, yeah.
Wait, do you have a?
Yeah.
What's the assessment?
You can't change that. From last year.
The S U assessment?
It's not testing.
The assessment, the S U assessment, you're portioning the S U assessment.
The assessments line goes on the bottom.
Location line. Yeah.
Yeah, assessment's. By two. Under travel?
Twenty-five?
Yes, the item that's on the.
Yeah, under travel.
That's the S U budget, right?
I learned that last year.
Oh, so probably you are on that committee. Just a reminder.
They call it different things, it doesn't say S U budget on it.
I think it's the S U assessment, yeah.
Some nice.
I, I, it's right, you thought it was like star assessments or something, I.
Two million dollars on the star assessment. We are way over testing ourselves.
Exactly.
But how else will we know? They're gonna be good people, we don't want to have them fill in bubbles.
Is, is, are you coming next month to do a presentation?
Uh, is next month meeting, like.
It's an, I don't know if it's a day.
Is it a vacation day?
I, I think it might be a vacation day.
January second. I.
Oh, for, for Wes?
I think for.
Everyone? It's January ninth.
Yeah, no, we're the second, aren't we?
Well, on the.
We're the first.
We changed it to the ninth on the work plan, because we knew that wasn't the second.
You come back to what, second? Yeah.
It's, as, it's invited in my calendar, it's the second right now.
It is?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I would, I would.
So. I would not be opposed to it being the second, I think.
Yeah.
That's just me putting that up there.
I feel like the second's actually good, because like, what if we come back on the second and we have this moment where we're like, middling through all these budgets again?
Yeah. It gives us another week to get together.
It gives us at least an extra week to like breathe through.
But it's more like, are you guys still on vacation?
So we, we are on vacation, there's no school on the second.
Oh, or when does vacation end?
When did you say school starts again?
I think it's the second.
Got it.
Oh, okay.